I thank you all for joining us this evening. Please, uh, join me.
Ready? Uh, Tom Roach.
Yes.
Chris Miles. Joe Carroll.
Here.
Elle Towns.
Here.
Christine Durkey.
Here.
Amanda Durkey.
Here.
Non-Brutal Amo.
Here.
James Don't.
Here.
We need to do our recognitions of successes before we do the community comments segment.
Uh, we had a very successful summer academy built at the elementary and the secondary level. Teachers put together a very fine program which the children came to pretty much every day. In fact, a number of them, we school was like that all the time. So it's good to get all the kids back in the building and get them motivated. The other thing that you notice has been a lot of group work going on to get ready for the school year. We emptied out the gymnasium, we get ready to use the gymnasium again, we're moving back into all of our classrooms. And we'll go over a little bit more about the opening plan later in the, uh, meeting.
Can you put us more about that, sir?
Kudos to the teachers and the custodial staff to make all that happen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we're gonna open up our community comment section. Toby, have you received any more?
I haven't yet, because I want to... Pardon me? A few, I think.
We're going to open up the community comment section. Toby, have you received any more?
No, just the one that gave.
Okay. Thank you. A public comment period not to exceed thirty minutes. Each shall be provided at each business meeting. In effort to provide an opportunity for all interested speakers, all speakers shall be limited to three minutes during the public comment period. Meeting members who wish to address the board or request to complete the speaker request form and submitted to the clerk of the board prior to the meeting. Comments regarding agenda items will be taken first. Speakers are reminded of the three-minute time limit. Should the thirty-minute time have expired, additional written comments may be taken prior to the meetings adjournment. A member of the board or superintendent will respond as freely received and review the comments. Members of the public speak to the board, they shall state their name and address, the name of the organization if any which they represent, and the agenda item they wish to comment on. Please be aware that by law, individual student information or particular personnel issues cannot be discussed at public sessions of the board. The board will not permit interruptions, slanderous remarks, or name-calling by speakers of the audience. We take public comment very seriously and careful notes will be taken. However, the board generally does not respond while the meeting is in public session. Board recognizes Miss Munoz.
Megan Munoz, in Chestnut Street. Um, once again, I'm standing in front of you, this is my third time. I'm still waiting for a response. The last time you waited to respond to what I said until I left the room. So I'm still waiting for answers. None of my answers were given to me by the superintendent that was on his way out. So my question to you is, as I stand here fighting to keep the school here, which is what we're here for, my question to you, which is most important, is about the curriculum for the children. I'm standing here trying to find out why children are allowed to go into school and there's a separate file for them to be a little boy or a little girl in the, in the school. I'm standing here trying to find out why that's okay and you guys have passed that. I'm trying to find out why my daughter got moved to the sixth grade in Fort Edward School, but her state tests say she's at a third and fourth grade level. I'm trying to find out why nobody in the school spoke out to me about this. I'm trying to find out why you're engaging in race-based learning in our school and teaching our children that some are better than others because of the race of their skin. I'm standing here trying to find out why you will not represent the people who voted you in. I'm trying to find out why we have a superintendent who was brought here to merge our school and we do not want the merge. I'm trying to find out why you're trying to seat somebody here that we voted no to twice. I'm trying to find out answers. I tried to do it through email, I've tried to do it through phone calls, I've sat down with the superintendent who was on his way out, gave me no answer, so it was very ill-will of you to stand here and say that he... Why would I speak? I speak because I'm a mother of children in this school. I speak because I care about what happens to our children. I speak because almost all of you on this board have touched the lives of my children and you know that it's wrong to merge these schools. This school stands for Fort Edward. Just because your children graduated doesn't mean our children shouldn't be afforded the same things that your children already had. That's not fair, it's not right, and it's not what the community wants. We stand here together, just because we didn't fill overflow the room. There are so many people. We voted no to that woman twice, we do not want her seated on the board. I will stand here and fight and fight and come back each time until I get answers to my questions. I'm asking you to please respond to me while I'm standing in the room to my face and not wait until I leave the room. I understand you say you don't make public comments, but you don't make private comments either. So I'm trying to figure out how this works. We vote you in, and then what? Nothing, no response, I can't get answers for why my child was moved to the sixth grade knowing she failed, grading children on how they behave for social-emotional learning? That is so oppressive. Everything that's being done is oppressive. We need to stop this nonsense. You guys vote for what goes on in the classrooms and you're not listening to the parents. If you sat down and you afforded me a conversation like I've asked a thousand times, then we could talk about this. Maybe your point of view is right and mine's wrong. I stand here as a Christian woman and I'm saying to you, please, don't do this to our children. Our children deserve better. They are God's gift to this world and they deserve an education that's the same that your children got. A God-loving, American education. None of this race-based, social-emotional learning, anything like that. And I stand here because I'm gonna fight until the end of this for this school to stay open, for us to bring in employees who want this school to be open. And I'll say one last thing, once again. If you guys don't wanna stand for what we want, then leave. And we'll step up, we'll take the seats, and we'll fight for what we want. And I say this to you, and I'm sure all of you know, I've already removed my children from this school. So I'm standing here with nothing to gain and nothing to lose. My children will not go to Fort Edward, they're going to a private Christian school in the fall so I can make sure that they can read and write and not eel- base their grades on social-emotional learning, which I was promised would never touch my children. I ask you, I plead with you, I'm coming to you with God before me saying, don't do this. This is not what the community wants, period.
Can you set up an appointment to come and see me?
I would absolutely love to set up an appointment to see you.
And Mrs. Perse, if you'll set something up.
Absolutely. So, I know, I mean, you waited last time until I left to make comments that weren't true, so I was just hoping that maybe you could at least say something to me, since I've been trying for a year to get a response out of the board. And the only one person who responded to me is sitting here and I was promised things and I got nothing. Not by you, you know what I mean. I was promised a meeting and then it was, oh... So I'm, I'm just... You're the president of the board, speak to us, we're human. We just want to know. Like I said, maybe what you're saying is right, maybe you can change my mind, but silence... There's not even room for discussion, that's not fair. It's not, this are our children, your children graduated already.
You're asking me to speak, but you won't give me a break. So, Megan, I have no problem talking to you. You wanna call me or meet, we can talk. As far as it's some of the questions you have, like I said the last time, it's a bit above this board, some of the things you're talking about. We talk about things in this board room, but there are things that are provided by the state and other entities on it. Okay, so SMART would be a better resource for you when it comes to that stuff, just like Dan was. And the only thing I said, I tried to say before you left...
The only thing I said before you left was that I was aware of the fact that you had met with Dan. Now, maybe you weren't satisfied with that.
I wasn't in the room when you made your comments.
I understand, that's the only thing I tried to say. For the record, Dan did meet with you.
Right.
And it seemed that what you were saying was contrary to the fact that Dan had met with you, but maybe you weren't satisfied with that meeting, that's the difference.
No, but Dan was the one who guided me to speak to you because he's the one who told me that you guys implement the curriculum. You guys passed the budget that would talk about race-based learning, that you guys passed the budget on any mandates or anything going on in the school. That's why he was the one who had me sign up and come speak at the board. It didn't matter to him either way, he was on his way out. It didn't matter, whatever he was gonna say to me wouldn't matter for Fort Edward, it would only matter for Hudson Falls. And I adore Mr. Ward, so, I, I'm, and I don't come here with disrespect, I come here at this point with frustration because it's been a year. I deserve answers.
I understand what you're saying.
I just...
If you're here, I meant that if you're not satisfied with that meeting...
I, you know I'll be back!
Thank you.
Thank you!
Uh, board recognizes Kristen Taylor, 21 Avenue.
Good evening, I would like to thank you all. Thank you all for the opportunity to be heard about the annexation. My name is Kristen Taylor, I'm a resident of twenty-four Boring Avenue. My hometown was born and raised at flying fort, as is this fairing. I was raised with a little more chaos and instability when it came to finding my hometown. I was the new kid nine times and have experienced class sizes of all kinds. Even then, as a child, I can notice the difference in the bigger districts versus the smaller ones. Sure, they had more to offer, more money, more programs, more resources. All things are beneficial for our children. However, I firmly believe that the most valuable resource a school can possess can only be found in the close-knit towns, much like this one. A strong personal bond between students, teachers, and the community can be the most important role in a child's education. Some children walk the same halls as their parents and grandparents did. Teachers and students form an unbreakable bond with familiar, comfortable faces everywhere. The kids grow hometown roots some people may dream of. It is an opportunity all hands on earth to be a part of a small school community. This school has stood for one hundred and five years. Not only has it survived one hundred and five years worth uncertainties and unprecedented times, it has, has made this community the Fort Edward it is today. When the public education, age, public education system was created, a law was passed that schools would be funded by taxes paid by homeowners within that community. It is our civil duty to educate our future for another hundred and five years, no matter the cost. Our town needs a school, just as much as this school needs our town. We are not Fort Edward, we, we are Fort Edward, I'm sorry, we are not Southland Falls. Please don't make our children be something we are not. It is within my understanding that if this annexation is approved, this board will be dissolved along with Fort Edward district. Although we will have the opportunity to vote Fort Edward members into an already existing board, the board that stands here today on behalf of these children in this community will be forever dismantled. I believe each and every one of you took this oath, took that oath because you wanted to make a difference for our children and our community. I'm asking you all to remember Section four, point eight of the New York State Board of Education handbook. That reads, "What is the most important consideration when making a decision? The primary consideration is the tangible impact the decision will have on your district's students. If you understand the facts and relevant data and you keep the needs of all students in mind when making decisions, you will undoubtedly make good decisions. Remember your first responsibilities to every student in your district, keeping this in mind when it exists you in making the right decisions despite pressures that certain constituent groups may exert. If you vote to move ahead with this annexation in October, you are voting to walk away from your duty and these kids. We teach our children to never get out, give up, yet as adults, we are so quick to choose the easy way out. Uprooting a child in any form can have crippling effects on their lives. As a parent and a taxpay member of Fort Edward and betting you, don't push our children out of their flying fortress and ask them to land as bulldogs."
Board recognizes Chris Boucher, two fifty-four Broadway.
Did you already say the address? Did you already say your address?
Six fifty-four, is that correct?
Yes. Okay, this is gonna be short, but I'm gonna try to stick to a couple, uh, quick little comments here. Uh, the first, as I'd like to talk about is, uh, taxes and tax rates. Before the meeting today, I was able to track back to two thousand and twelve. Uh, in the following six years, the tax rate rose less than one dollar per thousand, uh, for, between the whole six years. That's a hundred dollar increase in school tax for a house assessed at one hundred thousand in total for six years. In the following two years, we had a couple tough budgets that some could argue could have done a little less impact to the tax rate. Nevertheless, we ended up going up almost nine dollars in two years. That's nine hundred dollars on a hundred, a hundred thousand dollar assessment. That's the bad news. What's being left out of the conversation is that this village has not been revalued in fifteen years. Since two thousand and six, many homes in this village, um, have not been revalued. Many of those homes will be seeing up to a hundred percent increase in their property value when assessed, reassessed this year. As we gain more assessed value, the tax rate will plummet to a competitive rate closer to those schools around us. Our real rate right now stands around twenty-one dollars per thousand at a hundred percent valuation. After the, after the revaluation, we could be in the range of seventeen to eighteen dollars per thousand. As it stands, Southland Falls tells us that we'll be under fifteen dollars per hundred thousand, or fifteen dollars per thousand after a merger. So we're talking about dismantling this district with over a century of tradition for two dollars per thousand assessed. Two hundred dollars for a hundred thousand dollar value. That's reality. The second thing I'd like to address is conflicts of interest. One board member seems to have several conflicts of interest, one that would conclude him from voting on any annexation votes. The other is loss of community.
At your house numerous times. You would never think that about her. But this, the staff, the teachers here are amazing. They supported her, her class, she would not have that at that school. That is the one thing I want you guys to think about, how this affects these kids. They, they don't have that, they don't have that family, they don't have that community. It takes a village to raise these kids. I can't do it alone and these teachers were there for us this whole school year and probably this next year. They gave her grace, she had attitude, she had everything, nothing like what we normally have, and they gave her grace and compassion. And I can only just thank them for that because that means the world to our family. And I just, I want you guys to think about that when you're thinking about this vote is, how is this gonna affect our kids? It really is going to put them in a situation that is so much worse than what they have. It really is. Anything can happen at that school. They have horrible bullying problems, they have, these kids are not nice kids, they're just not. These teachers look at them as a number, they don't look at them as a kid. It's just, it's sad. That's what I have to say.
Board recognizes Jill Collins, twenty-two and McIntyre.
Hi, everyone. I have a question and would like each board member to answer. How do you or did you travel to work every day? By car or bus? Car, bus?
Car.
Car, okay. So you stayed and drove with a car. Now, you've all ridden on a school bus at some point in your life, correct? They are not what you would say as a preferred way to travel. Now, try being five years old, getting up at six AM to start your day. You catch the bus and sit on it for over an hour and a half. That is just to get you to school. Then, after you start your day... Oh, sorry. Then, after that long ride, you have to put your game shoes on and enter your school and start your work day for six hours. Finally, you get home, you're expected to start the next chapter of your day, homework. But first, homework. Get your game shoes back on, buckle up, and start the ride of life and complete exhaustion and start working again. Then finally, it is time for dinner, play a little, bathe, and go to bed. I don't know about you, but I, alone, do not want commute, three hours a day, five days a week. Now, be five years old and have to do that. This is what will be expected of a five-year-old if this annexation goes through. This commute will be expected of every student in grades K through twelve. Let that sink in. Three hours. Still water. Amongst other schools have started their school days later, after scientific data proving that a later, a later start to a school day is a very positive impact for children. The CARE Institute at the University of Minnesota has done the most quoted research on this topic. It centers on academic improvement for all ages. The consequence for a lack of sleep in adolescents include increased risk of obesity, mood disorders, depression, and low performance at school. Yet, with the annexation, we will be doing the complete opposite of that. Start your day earlier and end it later. Tell me again if this annexation is in the best interest of the children, because it isn't.
Uh, I'm gonna go a little fast here, but, uh, board's gonna recognize Amanda Raybin, one oh two East Street.
Hi, Amanda Raybin, I live on one oh two East Street. Before I start, can we acknowledge that while we're supposed to respect the community of the board members, you have a board member shaking his head at our comments and it's really inappropriate, so maybe that should be addressed as well. Um, anyways, so, the reason I decided to speak today is because I feel like the biggest reason for this merger, this annexation, is taxes. That's what everybody's talking about, taxes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Taxes?
Taxes.
That's the, what you've been using to get people, you know, to go for this, 'cause they'll get a tax rate. Ultimately, what it comes down to it, as Audrey was saying, it's for the children. And none of what you've put out there is going to be better for our kids. I don't understand, we chose our kids for the community, not just the village that we live in, but the community these teachers have built in the school. These teachers who have been here for years and know our kids and fight for our kids and will do anything for our kids, and they're not gonna have that at Southland Falls. We live in a poor district, we're going to have so many kids here who come to school for food, for attention, for that love that they're not getting. Do you think that's gonna happen when we send them to a school that has been one of the highest suicide rates in New York State? Because my bet is that it's not. What's gonna happen when, if this goes through, there's gonna be allowed twenty-seven kids per grade in the school? So, the other four or five just get kicked out of a lot and they get shipped off and they don't know anybody and they're spending three hours on class 'cause they weren't the chosen kids? None of that is what's best for the school. Sorry, I lost my place a little bit. I actually had a mom call me tonight because she wanted to come and she could be here. And she was really upset because not only is Southland Falls low for their suicide rate, but they're known for bullying. She has five racial children and she is terrified that this is going to go through because she has to pull her hairpins and move them because there is so much known for the racism in that school because everybody's just a number. You keep saying that the kids are gonna have more opportunities. Yes, there's more options, there might be six sports instead of three, fine. But they're competing with more than five times the children to get those spots. They're not gonna have those spots. They have those kids picked out from sixth grade on. Do you think they're gonna take the Fort Edward kids in and be like, oh yeah, this is great? No, it's not gonna happen. Sorry, I'm old, I remember. Our kids are not gonna be anyone but a number. They are not going to get anywhere, they're not going to get the scholarships that they're going to get. Your daughter graduated this year, did she get scholarships? I'm gonna assume, I was at graduation. The Valley Children's Lutheran got a ton of scholarships. The larger schools, the Valley Children's Lutheran are getting not even a quarter of that because that money's being split between so many other people. So these kids that are graduating number one in Fort Edward might be sixty in Southland Falls? It's not gonna be the same, they're losing so many opportunities, we're taking that future away from them. We're not setting them up for something when we can't, they no longer can get the opportunities. It just doesn't work like that.
No, that's wrong, you have thirty seconds.
I'm sorry?
You have thirty seconds.
Fine. So, what concerns me the most is that we have board members who aren't for this school. And that scares me. When I was in junior high, I had a teacher who was constantly beating Fort Edward pride into me, Fort Edward against the world. His son sits on this board today and he is doing everything he can to shut this school down. And that is the most disappointing thing to me out of all of this. If you guys aren't here for the kids, then just step down. Somebody who's here for the kids will be happy to take those positions. Thanks.
Daniel Boucher, sixteen and Manhattan, Harris Street.
Thanks, I didn't plan to speak tonight. Uh, I was gonna save it for next month to speak on the merger. A larger speech, maybe in a hotel, but the way the first speakers started in your response to it, I wanted to say something. I've sat in a role for quite a few years. I did your jobs, they're not fun, they're not terribly rewarding, which people talk about. Uh, but you decided to do it. You're an elected official, you're a public elected official by this community. Too bad that you don't like your comments. That's what you signed up for. If you don't like it, you gotta hit the door. People shouldn't be rude to you, totally agree. But they can be honest with you and they can say things to you that are true. If they're true, they're true. You gotta accept it and you can't cut people off whether you want to or not. That's the reality. This one kinda fired me up because I sat in the seat a lot, people said some not-so-nice things to me. And I deserved a lot of them because you make tough choices. Sometimes you make them, people aren't gonna agree with you, but you're, they're your choices. And you move on. But you say them because you're an elected official and you speak up. And I served my time on the board, all of our members had a chance to speak up and we said things very loudly and proudly so the community understood what we thought and how we felt. And we said it individually because you're individual elected members. You're not a group of nine. You're not. There's nowhere in the law that says you're a group of nine. You vote as a group of nine and the outcome is there. Your comments are individual, if you decided to roll call, that's individual. Other than that, you're individual elected board members. Say what you feel, the community would love to know because they put you in your seats. Last thing, please stop saying that you wanna send votes to the community. That's not what you're talking about when it comes to an annexation. You're either voting yes or you're voting no for annexation of our community's school. The resolution will not say, "I chose to send it to the taxpayers." It'll say, "Vote to annex the school district to Southland Falls." That's what it will say. And you'll have to say yes or no, and you'll have to say it out loud so everybody hears it. You can't go to the person at Stewart's and say, "I just thought it should go to the taxpayers." That's a cop-out. You're elected official, I'm either for it or I'm against it, that's how I'm gonna vote. Not, "I think it's fair to send this to the taxpayers." That's not what you're voting on, that's not what the resolution's gonna say legally. That's not what it's gonna say. Stop saying it. Stand up for what you believe in and say it. Everybody will respect you a lot more, whether you agree with somebody at Stewart's or not, just say what you think and be done with it. That's what you were put in the positions to do, that's why you're elected, that's why you decided to sit up here. If you don't wanna do that, which is the most basic thing, and I don't need to get into all the specifics of your roles 'cause you know them, the number one thing is actually stand up and tell people what you think. Please.
Move right along. Let's go to the board committee reports. The finance meeting will be this evening. Our next meeting will be at 6 o'clock prior to the next board meeting. I don't see that we have any meeting dates on the agenda. Is policy updates?
Yeah. Sure, some meetings too. We have a quick word on policies that need to be looked at.
Okay. All right, so. All right. Any questions on committee reports meeting? All right, next up. Mark, you're up, those who can take it.
Good evening. Just as you've been watching on the news, all of the schools are working on a reopening plan to bring all the children back and to do it in the safest way possible. So this is the plan as of now. This plan can change based on changes from the state, the CDC, the county, the new governor, whoever. But this is where we are today. So as stated, our purpose is to bring all of our children back to school to participate in in-person instruction. Because that's the best way to instruct children. There. So that's our goal. And what we do is conduction with the guidance from the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the New York State Health Department, Washington Health Department of Health, Need and Risk Management, who's our safety specialist, and the district's medical director. This guidance is subject to change. It could get less restricted, it could become more restricted. But we'll know that as things change. But this is where we are today. Remote learning is only being offered if there is a class or grade-wide or school-wide mandatory quarantine issued by the Washington County Public Health Services. There is not the option to self-select for distance learning. Masking, just like we're doing right now indoors for all personnel in the district.
Unmask the kids, this is ridiculous.
Regardless of vaccination status, frequent student mask breaks are encouraged. Outdoor masks are not required. Have a please noted, the CDC does recommend that unvaccinated individuals wear masks in crowded outdoor spaces. That doesn't mean recess. What that means is for sitting shoulder to shoulder under bleachers. That's a crowded outdoor space. Outdoor learning recess is encouraged to be used as much as possible. And masks are required just as any other transportation mode on our buses and vans. That's done by the Department of Transportation as well as CDC guidelines. Hand washing, we're gonna continue with the hand washing constantly throughout the day. Remind everyone to wash their hands frequently and use the proper hand sanitizers based on age groups. Daily health screening, we're still asking parents instead to complete the daily four-hour screening tool, the one that you go onto your computer, put in your name, that you're feeling good, no symptoms, and come in. And if we don't see it, then the nurse will go and down and make a check. Students and visitors will complete the temperature check tool upon arrival. That's all of us entering the building. Because if we could keep someone out of the building with so many symptoms, that keeps them away from children that could possibly end up having to need quarantine. Attendance, all students are expected to attend school every day, just like every other time. And we will provide remote learning if there's something to do with quarantine. Individual students who are quarantined will be provided with tutoring. So if it's where we have the outbreak in the class, we provide distance learning. If it's just your child, there's a lawsuit, then we go to the regular sick tutoring mode. Testing, at this time, Washington County is developing a potential screening plan. It's not anticipated to be completed till September and it will have voluntary participation if anyone chooses to do it. We'll find out the plan, we'll get it out to you. And if you choose to have your children participate in a grade, if you choose not to have your children participate in a grade or harm or foul, we're just gonna move on.
Mark, can I have a review? I just have a question about the last one about the tutoring.
Yeah.
Who would be providing with a tutor? Are we contracting through like a subservice?
No, the tutoring is just like we do for any kid with broken legs.
Okay.
Sometimes it comes to school.
Alright, it would be somebody that would need to apply and improve them?
No, we usually, it's usually our own faculty.
Okay.
Where we put out alert and say, "Hey, we need tutor for..."
Ex-kid, or whatever.
Yep.
Right, okay.
They all like, "Yep, I'll do it".
Alright, sorry.
Hopefully. Hopefully I'm good. Social distancing, the good news is we don't have to do the six-foot distancing anymore. The CDC has moved it down to three feet. However, if we do have space for us to stretch it out, then we will. Classroom windows and doors are to be open for increased ventilation. We need to work on our HVAC to expand ventilation plus get some child-safe fans into the building to, well, we are out of the building. Seating charts are required. So wherever we go, we do need seating charts. And we're back to using the stair walls and organize, you know, up and down on one end and where the stair walls wide enough where they can pass each other, but just more than three feet. Now, the meals in cafeteria, the primary area is gonna be the cafeteria with other overflow and other areas. The students are gonna be separated minimum of three feet. We measured it out as closer to five using a staggered seating system. We can get everyone out. And the masks are worn unless you're eating. So while you're engaged in eating and drinking, you can lower your mask. When you're finished eating and drinking, pull it back up. That way, it minimizes the time of possible contact and it will reduce the, you know, when we meet with the county to say, "Yeah, the person sat there during lunch, this is how much time they were exposed", it hopefully diminishes the need for quarantine. So for quarantine, this is the plan with the county at this time. If there is an exposure, if your student is 12 or above or you're a faculty and staff member who is fully vaccinated, you are not required to quarantine if you're asymptomatic. Remember, we're in masks, so if you're asymptomatic, they'll let you back in. Unvaccinated individuals, if they were separated by at least six feet, no quarantine is needed. That's why we're gonna try to keep the distances when we have them in the room. And if they're separated by less than six feet, it properly masked. No quarantines required. Properly masked means just like we're doing now. If you're wearing it as a chin strap, that doesn't count. If you're wearing it as a headband, it doesn't count. You have to be wearing it properly. So they don't, we'll do our best to help the children do that. If not masked, an example, during the new time, again, it just perled off the county. They'll ask us who was sitting, where were the seats? How long was the child eating? Did they mask up right away after they were done? And they might tell us, monitor the kid's temperature, keep them in a mask, maybe put them in a little bit in isolation room, but we don't have to quarantine from school. But we'll find out when the time comes. Just to follow the county guidelines. So inters-classic athletics, indoor sports, masks at this time are required. Outdoor sports, masks at this time are not required. Spectators, indoor sports. We're supposed to have limited spectators, masks are required. Thank you everyone here for wearing masks. But just so you know, what we're gonna try to ask people to do is if you have a family group, try to keep the family groups together and create a little bit of space for the next family group. So that way, we can get more people in than if we had some weird, you know, six-foot seating methods. So work with us so we can work with you. Extracurricular cooperation, we're gonna have all of our clubs as usual. The kids will follow the same thing they do in school. Hopefully, clubs will meet outdoors when the weather's right. And field trips at this time are being considered on a case-by-case basis. Chances are, we'd have to look at, you know, where we're going, what the situation is, what the COVID count is in that area. Again, just like last year, we go through the daily cleaning, disinfecting, ensuring that our filters are ready and our HVAC systems, using child-safe fans, ventilation, high-volume touchpoints, disinfect it frequently, and use a hand sanitizer, good hygiene, and all staff have access to PPA. So if the children come in, they don't have masks, we'll make sure that they get one. Use of school facilities, limited indoor use of the school facilities by outside groups. Safety protocols we need to be adhered to and that utilization does not impede our ability to clean the building. So if we need to clean the building so the children have the building ready from the next day, that could limit where or how much space we could use for indoor use outside groups. Visitors, the number of visitors are limited and mask and temperature checks are done at the screening table when you come in. And our safety drills, like fire drills, lockdown drills, we have to do it in a way that we're not like crowding on top of each other. So they'll be modified to maintain social distancing. The children basically know what the signals are and what to do. We're gonna secure the substitute teachers for all our positions and the substitutes will follow when we're in our building, all of our protocols. Vaccinations, there is no current mandate or requirement for employees to be vaccinated. The district will work with the Washington County Department of Health on encouraging vaccinations and holding limits to eligible individuals. We're just gonna try to make it easy for those that wanna get vaccinated and are eligible to get vaccinated. If you don't want it, that's your business. But some people have a hard time getting to wherever they live now they might need to get to to get the vaccine. We just wanna make it more available to them. Again, if it's a child, the parent's permission. If it's an adult, it's on them. So that's the reopening plan.
May I ask a question?
With comments that we're following guidelines named by medical professionals. Not a medical professional. So those of us who are in the education business will do everything we can for the education part to get our kids in school, but we have to trust the educational professionals.
I have a question. What if a parent doesn't want their child in school in a mask? Are you gonna refuse them entrance to the school and their education? Because there's a lot of parents who feel, "I didn't waste time talking about this because I turned in the scientific data". I'm a scientist, a chemist and biologist. And I turned in all the data. I've asked you guys to look it over previously. I've asked to meet with the doctors, I've asked to meet with anybody, a scientist. So I'm just wondering, are you gonna turn children away because of this medical apartheid that you're creating?
So, now, basically, what you're looking at here right now, it's the same as a dress code. We're doing it for the care of the school, keeping people safe. If you choose not to have your children in school, you're self-selecting.
There's a 0.0005% chance that a child will transmit it. So if we're gonna do this, let's be honest. There's a 0.0005% chance a child will transmit COVID. All of our daypares have been opened. I have not heard of one child in Port-au-Prince School transmitting it. So I know that a lot of parents' concerns are that their child are gonna be sitting in a mask breathing carbon dioxide all day. And I have the papers that I turned in to Mr. Ward to prove exactly that, the tests that were done. So once again, let's take our children and their health, their learning, their stability, everything about the facial features that we can't see on anybody in the room into consideration. Because parents have a right to know whether you're gonna turn their children away at the door for an education if their child comes to school without a mask on. And that's not being addressed.
Well, for everyone to have a safe school, what we're gonna do, everyone participates, does their part. We keep people healthy, we keep people safe. I don't wanna be the one who's asleep to say, "Hey, I'm smarter than the CDC, the county health professional".
I'll say I'm smarter than them.
Well, that's great. But you're not the one that's...
I actually got my data from the CDC.
But you're not the one that's gonna be sitting in that courtroom if we lose a child for some...
Sir, please, don't play that, please don't play that script. We haven't had one child in Port-au-Prince.
Thank you, Mrs. Mearns, we will talk to you.
We will.
Yep.
And I hope you look over that data before I come.
Well, send it to me for that.
And Mr. Ward has the copies, I'll be happy to drop them off.
Alright. So that's, that part of the report. So Alex, wanna switch off to the next one? The other part of the report is the merger study. The merger study was presented to the commissioner. The commissioner sent it back to the consultants. The consultants did their update and they'll be presenting it to the joint meeting of the school board on Thursday down at the Wishy Boys in Midas Center. Staffing update, you'll see on your package that there's five.
Do we have a time for the...
I'm assuming 6:30 at this point.
Thank you.
I requested 6:30, if people have time to get it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. The staffing update, you'll see we have a number of hires, but we also have a number that we have to fill. We have to be able to fill the psychologist slash CSC chair position. And we have to be able to fill the earth science position. We reached out to earth science teachers, including retired ones, and it's been a no vote. So we're still slugging that one out. And we think we're getting close on the psychologist CSC chair. But there's a few things that have to be put out there too. And grant update, grants were filed. I worked with Charlene and the rest of the staff, Jamie and Sandy of the Boston Up North. And we're all filed and we're on time at this point. So all of our grants are in the queue where they're supposed to be. So we got that done this past month. And let's see if the next one, there it is. So there's another thing called the reassessment and the tax level. And I'm sure, and sometimes this is the one that confuses people, what is the tax rate? What is the tax levy? What is an assessment? This is just informational, just bear with me. It's my social studies teacher, giving it a big chance. I knew it was gonna be an overture, I could do something. So the town is going to Fort Airport, going through the reassessment, as was mentioned earlier this evening. This will provide a truer picture of property values, so that everyone is reassessed within the same timeframe. This will help us with our assessment within the state and the county. At this time, the state and the county use an equalization rate of 73%. So what they're saying is that when we pay taxes or this area pays taxes into the county, they use a formula that they bring you into what they call 100% true value when you're paying towards county taxes, or if you were a school technician for multiple towns. And they put a formula in saying that this property needs to pay X amount for one. Now, Washington County, there was a town, and people go, "It's called Easton". And if you remember, Easton had to be assessed for like, who knows how long. And they had a reassessment rate of 40% at one time until the state made them reassess. So the reassessment's gonna come in, but it doesn't mean your house is gonna go up 27%. Some houses might, some houses will go up less, and unfortunately, some houses will go up more, I don't know all of that. For Fort Airport, we only have one tax jurisdiction.
Acuity is not necessarily bad.
Huh?
Acuity is not necessarily...
No, no, you're right. No, you're right.
No, pretty badly it's going up and our county's actually a good one.
Yeah. So, no, it makes it easier, there's a lot of things it helps with.
Well, it helps us in the fact that we actually have some talent for that. Until there's no school, then nobody's gonna wanna buy and afford that much stuff.
So since we're a single district, we haven't really, like, where I live, there's four towns that pay into the school district. And before the state came up with the full reassess value, you would be paying your mortgage to the bank and life would be good. And then all of a sudden, there'd be a reassessment in your town, but not the other three towns. And then your... And then your rates would spike. Then the other town would get reassessed, and then your rates would drop. So it was a mess. So the state said, "You know what? We can't live like that anymore." And a lot of the school districts couldn't live like it anymore, or the villages, the towns. So in the end, they started doing what they called annual reassessments, which was easier for the towns to keep up with because it kept everyone more on line, and those spikes didn't happen anymore. And I'll tell you, as a person who starts to, you know, pay their mortgage to an escrow, made a big difference. So when the reassessment is done, and this is a key word, with fidelity, that means hopefully the assessors are really doing their job the way they're supposed to. They took all their training, and they do it with fidelity. We'll get a truer value of what the district true value is, but you'll also get a truer value of your home and how your home compares with that in the community. But they cause confusion. When properties have not been assessed over a long time, as was mentioned earlier, it's gonna be a shocker for some people. They might have a house that was assessed pretty close to the 70s, and really hasn't come up much, and guess what? It's 2021, it could be a shocker. There is also a misnomer that is taxing entities, receive more due to the reassessment. That's not true. What does happen is when the school district comes out with a budget, and we ask you to vote on the budget, you're voting on the local proportion of the tax, or the local amount of the tax levy. Last year, that was $3.39 million. That's what you voted on. The town could increase in value by 1,000%. All we're getting is 3.9, or 2.89 of the assessed value, that amount. We don't get it anymore. When it's time for us to come out and ask you for your taxes at the next school budget, and we say we need X amount of dollars, what we're raising the rate on is on that levy, not on your tax rate. But we have to, by law, put that tax rate in there using the formula, and that's the number that sort of starts to shock people. But let me go over a couple of things, but that's what happens. Most towns are doing a Miami right now. Some towns have enough of an assessment, staff can do an acronym. Key vocabulary, the tax rate. That's the amount that we talked about earlier tonight of the true value for $1,000. Tax levies, you will know where I talked to you about. That's the amount of money that you voted on in May for the school district to raise from the local community in order to run the school district as best as we can. Assessment, that's controlled by the town assessor. That's the amount that the property's valued at by the reassessment. And when the assessor comes in to redo that, that would change the tax rate, but it's not gonna change the tax levy. So let's go, perfect world. House A is assessed at $200,000. House B is assessed at $100,000. House C, $300,000. Guess what? This assessor really did their job, and was doing it pretty well. And in the end, something happened. I don't know what, but maybe something, a national park went up next door. And now all the houses went up in the same at 25%. So now, House A, 25% more, is now assessed at $250,000. House B, $125,000. And House C, $375,000. So let's watch how this works. Under the original plan, House A, it's the rate per thousand. Say it was a water district, and they only need $12,000 to operate. Well, guess what? That house would pay $20,000 per thousand, because there's only three houses in the whole district. So they were paying for their share $4,000. House B, based on their assessment of $20,000 per thousand, was $2,000. And House C was $6,000. You can see the proportion stays the same. The total assessed value is $600,000. You're doing the math, $12,000 needed, like 600, $1,000 unit. Boom, $20,000 per thousand. Town goes up. Well, guess what? The town got reassessed. And when the town got reassessed, everyone went up the same. And there was a new value. But you know what? It didn't cost any more to run a water district. It was a flat budget that year. So House A is now assessed at $250,000, $125,000, $375,000. They all went up in proportion. But the tax rate went down from $20 to $16. So now you have a $12,000 budget divided by 750, $1,000 units in total value, which then brought the rate down to $16,000. The water district of these three homes receives normal on line. The levy stays the same. The amount that the taxpayers give the water district or that municipality stays the same. The rates change. The income for the municipality or the entity stays the same. So that's in a perfect world. Everyone's paying the same. It doesn't change my payment to the bank. Everything's flat, life is good. But that's not the perfect world. So this is all the things that happened in the perfect world. Although the home's value went up, nothing happened except the tax rate. So now we're gonna see where the tax rates change and what happens in that situation. Like I said, I lived through it when I was a young taxpayer trying to make ends meet. What happened? The tax levy did not change in this town. Just as we said, the value of the tax base went up, but it does not change the levy. Everyone in the young pays the same, well over there. So now let's go to a less perfect world. Same water district, three homes. House A is assessed at $200,000, House B is $100,000, and House C is $300,000. Nobody really came by this little water district to check things out. And what happened was maybe House C sold recently, like three years ago. Says they got assessed around $300,000. House B, no one even knew it was back there on the back row for the most part. Assessor never really checked. It stayed $100,000. They added a pool, they added a barn, nice big garage, cool things. House A was assessed at $200,000. Will they go through the reassessment on that little district? Great things happen, national park. But now, as you can see, the numbers aren't leveled, they're not balanced. You don't follow the same, everybody went up 25%. So in the original district, all different than the one we showed you in a perfect world, it was $20,000, remember we were tracking? We had $600,000 of value, $12,000 by 600 units, the same $20 as in the perfect world. But watch what happens. Now, House A is assessed at $275,000, and this gives us our new value. Our new value of the town went up to $825,000, which is $225,000 more. And our rate dropped to $14.54, a great drop. The problem here is, if you start to look per thousand... If you start to look here at the per thousand, notice that House A is around the same town, remember he was $4,000? But there are some big changes in houses B and C. So let's look at it. House A is now assessed at $275,000. Because remember, one of the pigs is the same money for the entity. So the formula is the same, but if you look at it, House B increased by about $1,273. Reason why is they weren't assessed properly. They were underpaying for years. House C, which was a more recent purchase, had been overpaying. And in this situation, because there's only three houses, House C was pretty much paying House B's freight. House A was pretty well on the money, and probably if I was to take the money out further, I probably would've got to the same $4,000. But social studies teacher, not a math teacher, said it didn't happen. So in the aftermath, House A, homeowner A, was assessed pretty correctly. Life goes on. The bank doesn't ask for more in escrow. He's a happy man. House C, when they saw the original assessment number, freaked out. They're like, "Oh my God, look at how much it is. The tax rate's $20,000 a day. I better start, you know, canceling the family vacation." But in the end, he's relieved to find out he's actually paying less. And homeowner B had a significant increase. It's managed, this thing was manifested at all the tax entities with the reality that they were underpaying for years, and their share was paid by homeowner C. But having more current annual assessment, the actual levy falls, and each property remains more stable. You're not gonna see those fluctuations. But notice, in this formula, we're still getting $12,000 for the entity. Just because the value went up, it doesn't mean that there's any change. So each year, the school district requests the support from the community, contribute to the tax levy. That's the one that's controlled by the 2% tax increase. So just so you know, if our tax levy is 3.39, let's call it 3.4, 1% gets us $34,000. 2% gets us $68,000 before we have to break the cap. Then there's some other numbers that get thrown in there in the formula, that business officials work out against capital debt and things like that. But that's the reality. So the levy doesn't change, even if we were to get an Amazon distribution center. It would be great, because it does bring down the taxes for the homeowners, but it doesn't change the finances for the school. When the district... Now, once we go over, and you all know this, because you've been through it, if we had to go above that 2% or what the cap is, we at that point need a 60% majority, which I'm on a favor. That was another of these laws that was passed. Then you don't just get your budget, you need 60%. Therefore, no vote counts a little bit more than a yes vote, which to me, I don't know how it stood, because, you know, each person won a vote, one point, but I guess not. So the tax rate set in August, which is what's gonna happen in this meeting, there's some good news. If you remember, when you voted on the budget in May, it looked like the tax rate was gonna be at about $29, I think it was. It's gonna come in around below $27. So the numbers started working in favor, because there were some missing properties that weren't in the mathematical formula in May, but they're there in August. So the bottom line, tax rates fluctuate. They'll go up, they'll go down. They saw what's going on in the community. How far off the mark from true value from the prior assessment is gonna change you a little bit more than the person who's closer. In fact, that person's rates might go down. And as the tax rates rise, the levy amount is unchanged unless voted on by the public. When voting on the school budget, you're voting on the local contribution to provide the program services or facility upkeep that the community wants for their children. So that's what we vote, our amendment. We vote on the levy, not the tax rate. Alright? And I'll take the question, because I like... It's fair? Okay, so that's it for...
Mark, when will the reevaluation start? When does that start? And when would it affect the...
That'll be a town or village question. I don't know if anyone up here or over there knows. You know?
It's a county-wide reassessment.
Right.
The county has a budget, and they're gonna be running it in the 21...
County?
Year of 2022.
So it potentially could start in January?
Not likely for next month.
Not likely?
Not for the next budget. It'll affect probably the budget after. But it's only gonna affect what the rate is, not the levy.
And we, as taxpayers, homeowners, once our property is reassessed, we then receive something in the mail that says, "Thank you for this and this is what..."
Every year, I get a little form that tells me, "Your house is gonna be assessed at this." And for a couple of years, I was like, "Wow, I wish I could sell my house for that." But now, the way things went recently, I could. But what happens is when I get it, I go into this, like I told you, I go into that freakout mode, like, "Oh my God." And then I find out that, you know, somebody else is on hold for far, far more than, because it's based on what's going on in the community. Then when you start looking at a Zillow, you say, "Wow, let's see what we can get around here if I sold my house for this rate." Then I find out I can't get anything, so I think that should improve it too.
I think you have a question back there.
Yeah?
So if we are reevaluating, why are we waiting to talk about an evaluation after everybody's reevaluated? I understand about what the levy and the rate, but are the taxpayers also vote on the levy correct? So why are we not giving the taxpayers an opportunity to see what the bottom line is actually going to be? Or are we just supposed to school it?
Right, so, great question, because guess what? Next month, we're gonna get a report from a business official, and she's gonna go with you a five-year projection on what we see for our 2% tax tax, and what projected costs are out there, so you can get a truer picture of what things look like down the road. Because remember, the rate's not gonna change. It doesn't matter to us what the rate is. What matters to us is what the levy is, which is what we can control. What matters to us is what C and A is, which is what we can control. And then the one unknown that's out there that we don't know, because there is stuff out there, is what other federal things just fall out of the sky, like we just recently received for the hour funds and the CARE Act because of COVID. That's the money we're operating, the kind of today.
I think that we don't choose the rate. Like, that's what they'll all be done through the process of getting that 100% levy correct. If that's where the rate is going to be.
So the grade began, that's set by the town and the assessor.
Right, they don't evaluate all the individual...
Right, but that doesn't change. This town could get, could triple value forever. We don't get any more money to operate.
We don't. I don't disagree with that. But the taxpayers, each individual home could constantly see an impact. It was, it was down to the rate thing, right? Every individual taxpayer is going to be assessing individuals at the end of the day. And so when they, when we get that rate, you are talking about that having an impact on what the taxes would be, on the levy, on the next taxes. Because if my rate drops, and I'm paying those taxes, I'm okay to show out an additional warrant out at the school and say, "Hey, let's move the school going," because I have a higher rate.
Gotcha.
Right, and I think the warrant's going to make a difference. Like, why are we not...
Well, I would hope so.
Mark, because the pass was like to put place.
Mark, can I piggyback a little bit on that? I think part of what you were asking is why we couldn't like pause the annexation study until we have the reevaluation information? And the answer to that really is because we're not driving that timeline. We as a board, we as a district, we as a community, this process of the annexation study is overseen by New York State Education Department, and they follow a very specific timeline, whether we agree with it or not. The reality is, that's where it's coming from. And so we, all of the dates that are in place for the things that we have to vote on, that's not because we arbitrarily say, "Okay, we want to vote in October." That's because that's the plan that was put in place with the consultants working with New York State Education Department, and New York State Education Department saying that it has to be done within a certain timeframe. If things aren't done within a certain timeframe, the whole study is a wash, and then you have to pay the money again to do another study. So we don't have any power in pressing the pause button because it's dictated from the reorganization document for New York State.
Right, and I do appreciate that. You have the ability to press the pause button in terms of the...
I didn't... Could you say that again, please? I didn't hear you.
You don't have the ability to press the pause button, but you all have the ability to say no.
Correct.
That's, you're correct, but the time, regardless of, either way, the timeframe is set in place by the education department. So all those votes for...
Our kids are worth the time we wait.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I just wanted to jump out what Amanda said, but you're absolutely right.
Now, I understand these things tend to be oversimplified. Tax rates seem to be diminishing, you talk about. The fact that we're really, the lot of these are real, the only method at the point, right? But the fact it still remains that schools are judged by the tax rate. So when you compare to your public school, and people are looking at, and you look at your tax rate, it's a lot all the others. Your judge or your taxes, when you sit down closer to others, and you're being taxed in true value... Your judge or your taxes, when you sit down closer to others and you're being, and you're being taxed in true value, your value may just not be as high for other school districts. But you're still being treated equal because your tax rate, you're being taxed the same rate. Now, uh, my, my question would be, don't you think that it's easier if you have a lower tax rate to ask the community for more money? So, so you're not actually, it actually does affect the district's finances because you're not stuck with a lower pool, um, level. It automatically, it's harder to ask the taxpayer for money at 25 than it is at 40.
No, and, and I hear you, there's a psychological value to that, you're 100% correct. But here's the deal, when I, when we come out and I ask for 2%, regardless of what the rate is, it's $68,000. And the minute we go to $68,500, which is what we're able to say it was, we now have a 60% majority. Now, you're right. If all of a sudden my, my tax rate is $15 psychologically, would I be so anxious to go running out to vote? No, maybe not. And, and I see that, there is a psychological value to it.
It's a bit psychological, it's not too psychological.
Now, now, right. So just so you know, the tax rate in the district where I live, it's under $7 per thousand. But do you know that on the tax levy, they tax levy over 10 million more from the community than this school district does? And their overall budget, same-sized school, is twice the, the budget for this. So really, you're right, there's complacency there where people don't even know what's going on. I watch it, I'm like, wow. But on the other side of the point, it, it's not a fair system. And, and you're right, a child should not have their, their education decided by zip code because it plays a big part, statewide.
But I still think, but I still think if there's benefits, there's benefits in higher assessments, people's values are what they are, tax rates are what they are afterwards. And it's not as simple as just saying, your tax rates won't go down, you're not going to charge taxes. You're actually getting, you're actually getting the world out of you because a crazy game of assessments.
In addition to that, and that tax rates don't matter when one of the huge selling points at the beginning of all this extreme process was that Southland Falls has whatever the tax rate was. And we're talking about ours being 21 or whatever the case it was in 73. It does matter because then the slideshow changes to 400 at $17 per thousand and Southland Falls at 16, changes things.
So, and, and what is going to happen is we've got to start unpacking that so-called report. Now, when, when that report gets unpacked, one of the things that I got to go over and clarify is I think they dropped the tax rate here to like, what was it? You said it was 15. But is that 15 based on our current assessment or per $100?
But it also doesn't matter because you're putting Southland Falls as they're working side by side with it. So you're going to have to look at it either way.
Yeah, no, no, these, these things in the report that need to be unpacked and clarified. I would love for you to come in and see me so we can go over it together and make sure you all have the same shit together.
You know, spinning off this thing as far as your house value evaluation after the assessment at $200,000, $20 per thousand tax rate. I've been in property management of flip houses, I was in real estate for six years with a few different companies. I sold a dozen houses in the town of Fort Ever. Um, the only reason people buy here is to go fishing at the canal is because of the school system that you guys are trying to eliminate. So in your $200,000 valuation, your $20 per thousand is going to remain when the real value, like we used to say in real estate, the real value is what somebody will buy it for. When your $200,000 house is not worth $100,000 because you don't have a selling point for this down, your taxes remain the same, they're not going to lower taxes. The government believes they're not going to lower taxes. They're not going to rob you of lots. So our taxes are going to remain what they are. Our house value is going to get cut in half because you don't have a selling point to get anybody to buy it down because you eliminated a school. Now you're paying $20 per thousand on a house that's worth 50% of what it was when they reassessed it last year. That's never in the, nobody ever mentions that in merger stuff. I promise you, when this, when this goes, we're going to walk away from these houses. The taxes are going to be left for taxes, they're going to be for clothes now, they're going to be for making. Businesses are going to walk. And all the rest of us are going to be left to pick up the bill. Actually, we don't, she has a 15-year-old kid in school, we wouldn't do it. Um, so the people that are left over are going to have to foot the bill for the rest of them. So, I hope you stay here for the rest of the week.
Oh, yeah.
So, when you guys are putting out information, put out all the information because this town will go ghost. It will be a ghost town. And everybody's still going to pay the same amount of taxes for nothing.
Alright, well, thank you.
And I'll have numbers next time to back it up of towns. I've worked with a few real estate agents on towns that have their schools annexed, like our town, small towns. And what happens to the property value taxes and all of itself, I'll have a, I'll have a speech for you next time.
Nice, thank you. Alright, so that's it for, for that support, turn your hand.
Uh, Trudy, report. You there, Trudy?
All documents in the packet, uh, we did review the cash flow. Everything looks really good at that for the end of the year, I had a lot different than it did last year, so it's good then. Um, and we're talking about reviewing a five-year plan at our next finance committee, uh, which is a half hour before the board meeting next, uh, next month. Any questions at all? Thank you and happy birthday again, Trudy.
Thank you.
Hey, 12 principal report. Mr. Warren, how are you?
I am well. So this summer, as you've already heard, we've been very busy having kids here in the building with our summer enrichment and summer school, uh, middle school and high school summer school. Uh, I just want to say thank you to our staff, um, that made this summer learning opportunity for our students. The students at Fort Ever had a great opportunity to be here throughout the summer. It felt like sometimes we had more students here in the summertime than we did during the school year when we were hybrid and this. It was great to see the energy in the building and people coming back. Our students also were able to show evidence of learning. They, you know, they were able to earn credit. They're able to gain knowledge and skills that are going to help keep them on track to graduate down the road. A big thank you to our parents and community, uh, for providing the support to our children and to getting them involved in our summer learning opportunities. I can say for the most part, when the, the phone calls were going home and we were reaching out to families, it was always yes. Um, yes, I'll have my cake up, yes. And I know in the elementary, there was a waiting list of people trying to get in. So hopefully that's something that can be expanded in the years to come. Obviously, for, for next year, a lot of prep is still happening. Um, school building is being prepared for that upcoming school year. The rooms, the hallways, the gymnasium, the cafeteria, everything's being cleaned and prepped and ready to go. And I can say our teachers are already in the building as much as they can, trying to get around all the cleaners, get around everyone so they can set up our rooms for our kids. And, and they're, they're excited to get back to a little bit of normalcy. Even though it'll be a little different still, it's still, it's moving in the right direction. So we're very excited for that. With that, we also have our new staff orientation, uh, which is coming later this month. We're excited to bring in some new staff and get them onboarded, get them an opportunity to meet with their mentors. And also just get an opportunity to really see the building, see the classroom, and then also go on a bus ride around the town and, and see our community a little bit more. Which I know last year, that orientation didn't happen because there was no opportunity for that. And then athletics, the fall athletics season is, is right upon us. Um, and just a reminder to the community, please, you know, go to our school website, print out those documents for athletics if your child is interested in athletics. Also, we have printed copies of those documents in the main office. You come in to the building, they'll be right there for you. Maybe he has a big pile of them for anyone who needs them. And we need those, um, athletic paperwork, we need all that in as soon as possible. Um, also with the updated physical requirements, that way that you can start your season on Monday. Monday, August 23rd is already here, my goodness. And then obviously lastly, I just want to say thank you. And thank you to everyone here in the community and the opportunity to be here, you know, for a short period of time. It's been a great opportunity, I've really enjoyed my opportunity here and, um, I just want to say thank you because everyone's been very supportive.
John, thank you, to me and John up from the boat later. You had some really big shoes to fill when you came in here. You did a great job, we appreciate all of your work, John, we wish you well.
Thanks, John.
I got a report, it's more of like a letter, I'll read it. It's from Craig Maston.
Craig Maston. The 2021 school year is upon us and we are in the process of getting the school cleaner ready for opening day. With summer school being at Fort Ever this year and being a very short staff has put us a little behind, but the staff that I do have are doing their best hack, Mr. Johnson. And we'll begin, we'll get it done as always. I've been trying to get the building maintenance position filled as it's been posted and not having very good luck. I will need at least one more full-time employee besides that one, the staff of my night crew. I only have substitute two cleaners at this point on nights as one of my staff will be leaving due to medical issues. So in a nutshell, I have three full-time employees at this point and that includes himself. I'm going to move Steve Nairn tonight and hopefully have a full-time person with him by the time school opens. Lastly, we discovered some issues with the new floors that were done in the Capitol project. The issue is that the back, the VET floors, the vinyl floors are coming up with very little effort. Mr. Bassin, the schoolhouse tetra tech and myself have met with the Armstrong reps as well as the floor installer to come up with an answer to why this is happening and it's still in the works. I'm sending staples to the floor tile as well as information from samples of the floor tile, as well as information from the floor adhesive used in our attic style. Everyone has their own theories of what happens or how it's causing it and it's a finger pointing stage right now. I'll keep the board updated to the findings and procedure of fixing the situation. So we, we have a number of floor tiles on a few rooms that just come out and you can't find the glue or any tacking this underneath. They just never, never adhere. Anytime I ever clean a tile floor, it was a lot of work, these have come up like, like a, like a post-it note.
Are they in the old part of the building or in the new construction?
We have some wooden floors, some floors up here, and then we have a couple on the concrete floor in the elementary. And they tried to claim it because our machines threw too much water down and cleaned them. But in reality, we never did that, that water cleaning because of COVID, those rooms were never used, so. So they never had that extra seal thing. Yeah, yeah, they tried to claim our floor machine did it. Yeah, yeah, that's the group's schoolhouse that they were working on it to. So that's, that's a progress. We're probably going to hit a floor there or something.
It's in the, it's in the...
It should be in the...
Yeah.
Discussion items, members' seats. So as a glance, everyone knows, we have a seat open, uh, on the board.
Could you use the microphone, please?
Uh, we have a vote. A vote, yeah. We have an open seat on the board. Anita Tripp resigned last month. Uh, we have, I believe, 60 days to... We have, yeah, about 90 now, or 60 now, right? So we have 90 days to fill the, uh, seat. So we have a couple of options that we can do in order to fill the seat. Uh, one is to hold a special election. Uh, the other is to, uh, ask for interested parties uh, that may have experience either running for the board or have sat on the board before. Uh, and have them, uh, send a letter of interest to Toby. Uh, and then we would pick some candidates from those interested parties, interview them, and then appoint someone from that list. So the board is going to decide between those two. Uh, there'll be a motion later, uh, um, acting upon, uh, one of those two motions and we'll see how that goes. Does anyone want to speak to the process?
Yeah.
You want to add something?
Yeah.
I just want to go through and provide the documentation of our timeline of how everything has happened for us since we got the resignation and Toby, I'll give you a copy of this for the minutes. I just feel it's really important for us as we move forward to have minutes as clear as possible so that if a Board of Education superintendent in the future needs to look back to, um, how we got from point A to point B to point C, it's documented for us. So, um, like I said, Toby, I'll give you a copy of this. On Thursday, uh, July 8th, 2021, there was an email to the Board of Education members from Mr. Roche to inform us of Anita Tripp's resignation. On Monday, July 12th, uh, we had an email from Mr. Bassin with a letter that, uh, was attached from James Dexter, the wishing goes superintendent. The letter from Mr. Dexter is dated on July 9th, 2021 and states the effective date of the resignation as July 7th, 2021. Mr. Dexter stated in this letter that the Fort Ever Board of Education, quote, "has a statutory obligation to fill the vacancy." The letter further states two options for the Board of Ed to fill the vacancy. Special election within 90 days or appoint a qualified individual. After we have received this information, there was some email correspondence between Board of Ed, um, members with some questions and answers that were shared through email. I personally originally thought that leaving the seat vacant was an option because there have been previous Board of Education member resignations that occurred and the seats remained vacant until the regular election time. I have learned through this process that those previous resignations were done within 90 days of the regular election time, which allowed them to stay vacant. Since we are well over 90 days until the next election, we have this statutory obligation to fill this vacancy. We also learned that there was a previous resignation for the Fort Ever Board of Education that was over 90 days and that seat was filled through a Board of Education interview process. On July 29th, um, we had a Board of Education workshop that included the district attorney, Mr. Jay Durbin, Mr. Bassin, and all of the Board of Education members. Mr. Durbin provided further information and education about our options. Within the option of appoint another qualified individual, there are actually a couple of layers to that and a couple of options. We could decide to appoint the next highest vote receiver from the most recent election or like Mr. Roche was saying, can conduct an interview process that includes interviewing and selecting a person that has previously ran for a Board of Education seat and or served as a Board of Education member. Some Board of Education members are in favor of a special election. Some are in favor of appointing the next highest vote receiver. And some are in favor of conducting an interview process. So I think now what would be best is for us to kind of discuss the pros and cons, um, of those options. And then I think, like we said, Mr. Roche, we'd then go on to do the resolution later in the meeting, is that how the, how that plays out for the next steps, is that correct?
Perfect.
Correct.
Thank you.
Toby, I'll give you the top.
Anybody want to speak to the process?
I thought that was very succinct.
Yeah. So some of the points talked about, again, in America, thank you for that. Um, special election, those costs, a little bit of money, uh, to hold a special election. Uh, that's one of the downsides of that. Um, and, uh, also, uh, we talked about some of the process to go along with that in the middle of the things that were going on. Some members are in favor of that, some members are more in favor of the interview process to get to a qualified Q debate. So those are basically the two options that we're, uh, going to talk about this evening. The first motion will be to go with, uh, the... The first motion will be to go with, uh, the interview process, which again will be to collect some levels of interest from folks, and then select three people from however many we receive, and then view those votes and appoint someone same day, so we kind of get the process expedited as quickly as possible. Uh, we'll come up with a deadline for, I'm just, if that's the way the board votes this evening, and if the board votes for a special election, uh, and doesn't move the vote for the interviews, then we would have a special election.
Mark, could you, um, clarify the approximate cost that you had shared with us, um, to do a special election, I meant to check that.
It was around fourteen hundred, you thought?
Yeah, I believe.
Fourteen hundred, but that doesn't include some other things too, because Toby, Toby's a part-time employee, and, and, so there's a lot of labor, so like, before budget vote, there's a few things we would need to do, but the basic costs for the machines, the ballots, and I think the newsletter we figured out?
It's at least fourteen hundred.
Right, it's around fourteen hundred, but then there's also manpower, it's gonna need to be added to put all those things together as well as run the election, so it'll, it'll increase with the hourly rates of people that we need to bring in to run in.
So, fourteen doesn't do the damn power to be running the election?
No.
Okay, fourth question, I'm sorry.
What can it not mean to the manpower to go through the day of the election?
Then me as to that would not with that.
It doesn't, it doesn't include the county work, the county ballot, what's it?
So, a base cost of fourteen hundred, with additional monies after the fact to pay for manpower and some other things that are not included in that, would be the cost?
You gotta pay for inspectors.
Yeah.
There are always those.
So, just, just go fourteen hundred.
That answers your question, if that's me.
I just wanted, this was like something you might tend to hire to people, but...
Well, not necessarily hired, but paid.
No, not really. I said don't.
So, yeah, that's, that, that motion is coming up, for the special one. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I don't want to go, I do not use the expense, all right, I just go to the highest.
I'm sorry, man, if you have a question, please send it to the board, thank you.
The board's...
I, I apologize, but it's, it's discussed with the board, please feel free to communicate to the board, send an email, thank you. Um, alright, so any discussion?
So, Tom, just to clarify, um, later in the agenda, there will be a resolution for us to vote to do the interview process.
Yeah.
If that passes, it passes, and it goes on, and then if not, then we do a resolution for a special election.
So, the first motion will be for the interview process, and if you don't know exactly what we said, but it's open to anyone to request, uh, to be considered. So, as long as they've either run for board or served on the board, it's kind of the qualification that we're looking for. Okay, so that's, uh, so yeah, pass or vote?
Question, Tom, please? I'm just trying to clarify the qualification, they have to have either served on the Board of Education previously, or run for Board of Education previously?
Correct.
So, can't be somebody that's just interested in running for the Board of Education even though they haven't served.
Correct, it's gonna be an election in May, obviously, for that.
Then, I'm talking about even the deployment process, as an example, I've submitted a letter of intent of interest, myself, on vacancy, I've never served on the Board of Education, but I've served on plenty of other boards. So, I just wanna make sure that by me submitting a letter of interest, I'm not excluded because I've never sat on the board.
I, I'm not gonna say that anyone's gonna be excluded, but I will say, like anything when someone posts for a job, what we're looking for is someone with qualifications.
That's fine, I'm just trying to make sure I have clarification, it's not a, it's not a requirement that I have served on the board.
Anyone is free to vote.
Correct.
Thank you.
Alright, so we don't move on, it's always an interesting time, I'm gonna move into consent agenda, I need approval for the minutes for July first, twenty-twenty-one, the organizational and regular meeting, need a motion.
Do you agree with that, Doc?
I need a motion for the approval of the minutes for July first, twenty-twenty-one, reorganization.
Tom, I need to interrupt you, can I just add that, just to state one other thing, uh, with regards to what I stated before, we were advised by the district attorney that if we're going to conduct an interview process, that it includes interviewing and selecting a person that previously ran for a Board of Education seat and/or served as a Board of Education member. So, I just want that known, that that is what we were advised by district council, I'm not saying whether somebody will or will not be considered, um, but I just want to reiterate that now, I'm sorry to cut you off.
Okay, so I take was, uh, the motion for approval of the minutes for July first, twenty-twenty-one, the organizational and regular meeting.
Motion.
Joe?
Second.
John?
I got, I got one question.
Okay.
Told on, uh, on the second page, on the organizational business, letter C, uh, the nomination for vice president, number one for Ella Collins, the motion was made by me, not by Nancy.
I can't hear you.
So, uh, yeah, so page two, I've seen, the motion for Ella for vice president was made by James Donnelly. What is it reading out here?
It was amended.
It was amended.
Okay, I'll fix it.
Got it, okay, so the motion's on the table with that amendment, all in favor? Any votes? Chris, I need your vote. That's good, okay. I need an approval of warrants and claims for July and August twenty-twenty-one, need a motion. Ella?
Second.
Joe? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Prove the treasures report for June twenty-twenty-one, need a motion.
Motion.
John?
Second.
Amendment, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chris, it's a no, that's good, alright, good. I need approval of the budget transfers.
Motion.
Joe, is that amended?
Yes.
Joe, amended, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chris? Action items, I need to accept the resignation of Anita Tripp as board member of Fort Everly New York Free School District effective July seventh, twenty-twenty-one, need a motion.
Motion.
James?
Second.
Christina? Any discussion? Thank you, Anita, for your years of service. All in favor?
Aye.
Most approve the following resolution. So long as allowed by public health officials, schools should not, should be open for in-person teaching and learning, and students should be in school. Therefore, we'll only offer in-person instruction as the primary method of instruction during the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. Only in the case of school closures due to a declared emergency, Fort Everly New York Free School District will be prepared to provide remote instruction. Therefore, our learning as an educational choice will not be offered as a modality except the instances of student quarantine and/or necessitated on days in which a school building cannot be physically open for the illness, damage, or weather conditions, or as required by law. Need a motion. Ella, Christina, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most approve the CSCC, DSC recognizations as included in the board package, need a motion.
Motion.
Christina? Ella? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Most approve the twenty-twenty-one school tax rules and authorized tax levy of three-hundred, three-hundred and ninety-two thousand eighty-nine dollars, tax rate twenty-seven dollars nine-six-six-seven-five-zero per thousand of assessed value, need a motion. James and Joe, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All good, any notes? Most approve the following resolution, A-one pilot post-community approval resolution for the New York Free School District CHPE LLC project, including in our packet, the payment terms and conditions of certain pilot agreement to be entered into between counties of Warren and Washington Industrial Development, Development Agency, and CHPE LLC in connection with the CHPE project, and the payment terms and conditions of certain post-community benefit agreements to be entered into counties of Warren and Washington Civic Development Corporation and CHPE, need a motion. John, Christine, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Set, need a motion to set that base non-resident individual tuition rates as follows additional charges for additional services as allowed and/or required by law will affect the final non-resident tuition bill on a case-by-case basis, K through six, six thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars, seven through twelve, six thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars, need a motion. James?
Second.
John?
Just make, make note, that, those are the same numbers that we looked at before.